We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Tuesday, September the 7th, 2021 to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Liner?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here. If you will, please let us stand together as we salute and pledge to the American flag, which will be followed by invocation from our county attorney.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, your word tells us that you give strength to the weary and you increase the power of the weak. You are our place to go when we are empty and our second wind when we are worn down. How do you restore the weary warrior? If we wait on you, you will refill us. If we look to you, you will guide us. If we listen to you, you will lead us. You make broken wings soar and weak legs sprint. King David often calls you a fortress. You are a place of rest and peace no matter what comes to our gates. Strengthen us today, God, as we acknowledge you, and be our fortress of peace when we run to you. We proclaim these things in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Commissioners, are there any items that you'd like to add or remove from tonight's agenda?
I make a motion and we approve the agenda as is.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the agenda is approved. Commissioners, tonight we have several public hearings before us, but before we do that, we have the petition of citizens concerning agenda topics. Mr. Vice Chair, do we have any citizens desiring to speak?
We do not.
Okay. I would give the opportunity one more time, is there any citizen that is with us that desires to petition the board on agenda topics this evening? Hear none, we will move to item two under the agenda, and that is a public hearing for CARTs. And at this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Kelly Walker if she will to come forward, please. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. The North Carolina Department of Transportation has released their fiscal year 2022-2023 grant opportunities and applications. We'll be asking for approval to apply for six of those grant application opportunities. Each requires the opportunity for public input as well as a public hearing. The public hearing is allowed to be combined, however, each grant application must individually be open for comment. Applications for these projects must be submitted no later than October 8th, 2021.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Walker. Commissioners, before I entertain a motion for a public hearing, what I'd like to ask is if the board would agree, as Ms. Walker just stated, that we could combine all six into one public hearing. What we would do this evening is we would allow, under each item, for the opportunity for any citizen to speak, and, but we can, for the record, have one public hearing for all six. Is that in agreement with everybody? Hear no objection. Do I have a motion that?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second that we open the public hearing. Any further discussion? Hear none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, all right. We are in public hearing. Ms. Walker, if you will, let's handle item one.
Okay. The item one is the 5311 CTP Grant Community Transportation Program. It is formula-based for public transportation projects in non-urbanized areas. CARTs has historically relied on this grant to assist with the cost of providing rural public transit services. Since the admin portion has a lower local match, CARTs develops that budget first.
Okay. Are there any citizens desiring to speak on the 5311 CTP administration grant? Hear none, okay, we'll go to number two.
Number two, the allocated amount that was not included in the 5311 admin budget was placed in the 5311 operating budget.
All right. Are there any citizens desiring to speak on the 5311 CTP operating budget? Hear none, we'll go to number three.
The NCDOT has a process for capital projects to be in an application, which does not specify which grant the capital projects will be placed. This allows flexibility and is determined by the state. Capital projects to be included in this grant application are replacement vehicles and replacement of other items, such as radio and vehicle surveillance hard drives and training equipment that are considered capital procurement items.
All right, are there any citizens desiring to speak on number three, the combined capital projects? Hear none, we go to number four.
Number four is the Rural State Operating Grant, and this is a request for a Phase Two that was developed from the data received from the fiscal year 2020 RSO grant activities. This project will span upon Phase One by continuing to address rural unmet employment-related transportation needs.
Are there any citizens desiring to speak on the Rural State Operating Grant?
Mr. Chairman. The RSO, what does RSO stand for?
Oh, I'm sorry, Rural State Operating.
All right, any citizens desiring to speak? Okay, hear none, we go to number five.
The 5310 Enhanced Mobility for Seniors and Individuals with Disability Program operating application would address the needs of the elderly and disabled to travel to destinations outside of our service area.
All right, any citizens desiring to speak on the 5310 Enhanced Mobility of Seniors and Individuals with Disability Program? Hear none, we'll go to number six.
Number six is the 5310 Enhanced Mobility for Seniors and Individuals with Disabilities Program Mobility Manager. And we would seek to apply for funding for the CARTs Mobility Manager position instead of using a portion of the 5311 allocations for that expense. This application project would focus on elderly and disabled, however, the general public may also benefit from the project.
All right, and then number six, are there any citizens desiring to speak on the 5310 Enhanced Mobility of Seniors and Individuals with Disability Program Mobility Manager? All right, hear none. Do I have a motion that the public hearing be closed?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, all right, we're back now to the board. That was just to receive public comment. We will be addressing this later on in the meeting, I think.
Yes, thank you.
More detail, thank you. Item three, commissioners, is a public hearing on economic development, and I ask Mr. Jeff Wood if he will to come forward.
The board's request to go into public hearing is advertised to receive public comments pursuant to NCGS 158-7.1 regarding Craven County's intent to award an economic development grant and the amount of $25,000 to Slot Plastic Limited for the planned expansion of its manufacturing facility.
Make a motion to go into public hearing.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, all right, Mr. Vice Chair, do we have anyone?
Nobody has signed up to speak.
Okay, nobody's signed up to speak. Anyone in the audience desiring to speak on the award of the Economic Development Grant? Hearing for no one, do I have a motion that we close the public hearing?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, all right, we're back to the board. Thank you, sir. Third public hearing, commissioners, would be for planning, the CDBG. We have with us tonight Mr. Chip Bartlett. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Tonight, we have the first of two public hearings related to the county's intent to apply for CDBG NR, or Neighborhood Revitalization, grant funds for 2021. The maximum grant awarded is $750,000. This is a 100% CDBG-funded program. There's no local match, and the intent is to repair or reconstruct severe housing in the county and the unincorporated areas of Craven County. These applicants, like before with other CDBG programs, must be low to moderate income, owner occupants only, or no vacant or rental units. Manufactured homes would have to be real property, and we are putting this application together. Again, there'll be, this is the first of two public hearings. Applications will be submitted to rural economic development in October of this year.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do I have a motion that we open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, all right, we stand in public hearing. Mr. Vice Chair, do we have anyone signed up?
We do not.
All right, we give the opportunity once again, anyone in the audience desiring to speak to the board concerning the CDBG.
Make a motion to go to public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, all right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Item five, commissioners, is the consent agenda this evening. You have there before you the minutes of the August 16th, 2021 regular session and August 19th, 2021 reconvened session. You have tax releases, you also have a budget amendment for designation check for the Sheriff's Department. You have also the military service person of the quarter resolution. Are there any items to pull from the consent agenda?
I'd make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as is. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hear none, madam clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you, commissioners. Next will be departmental matters. First item we have is for CARTs, the approval to submit the North Carolina DOT grant application. Ms. Walker?
Thank you. Grant application information for the NCDOT fiscal year 2022-2023, CARTs is requesting to apply for, have been available on the CARTs webpage and in the CARTs office. We're requesting approval to apply for the following grants. 15311 Community Transportation Program Admin. 25311 Community Transportation Program Operating. 3 Combined Capital. 4 Rural State Operating. 5 5310 Enhanced Mobility of Seniors and Individuals with Disabilities Program Operating. And 6 5310 Enhanced Mobility of Seniors and Individuals with Disabilities Program Mobility Manager.
All right, commissioners, do you have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. How much are these grants? How much money is involved?
Okay, the admin is for a total amount of $358,851. The 5311 operating is for a total of $67,030, and this includes federal, state, and local matches.
Okay.
The capital is for a total of $145,860. The Rural State Operating, make sure I give you the right amount, is for a total of $24,500. The 5311 operating is for a total of $20,000 plus, no, that one's not got the fair. Mobility Manager is for a total of $43,671.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm glad to see that we're getting these grants for the rural areas because sometimes we feel that the rural areas are forgotten. I'm sure that we have plenty of, I know in my district, people on disability and people who can't travel to town, and I think we have some of the workers that work in some of the offices or jobs at New Bern here, and I don't know if these amounts are enough to cover what I'm looking at, but it was nice to know what the amounts were. Thank you.
All right, other questions from the board?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve.
I have a question.
Discussion, Commissioner, Ms. Smith.
The people who will need the program, how are they made aware that they are available?
Ms. Kelly?
We will be doing advertising for the 5311 admin and operating. Those are grants that come to help us with operating expenses as well as the capital, but the Rural State Operating and the 5310 operating one would be ones that would be dependent upon trips provided to the public, and we would do advertising, public outreach, Facebook, on the county website, that type of a thing, to try to make sure that we get the word out there to everyone because we do want to utilize.
How are you getting it out, other than Facebook? Because if I'm a senior in Cold City, and I'm using Cold City because I have lived in that area, if I'm a senior there, and I don't really know anything about Facebook or whatever, how am I made aware that the program is available for me?
Well, we could do advertisements in the newspaper. We, all of our TAB, Transportation Advisory Board, members are aware of these projects, and we will send out information to them as well, for them to give details out about these programs in more detail, and we are open to suggestions of other ways of advertising. We do want to make sure that we get the word out.
Kelly, you do have this, what CARTs offers within a brochure, correct?
Not all of the programs within a brochure. We have a ride guide, but some of these, for example, the RSO, that's in the 5310 operating, those aren't always available every year, and the amounts can vary, and we apply for, you know, for the certain amount. So it would be hard to have one brochure that says every type of grant that's available. When someone calls into the office in regards to their transportation needs, our office matches them up with the grant that's most beneficial to them, because either way CART still gets paid. So whatever is the grant that's most beneficial that they are eligible for to the passenger is the one that we assign to the passenger.
Mr. Chairman, one of the reasons I ask the amounts is because, as a commissioner going through the different districts, one of the things that I bring up is CARTs to the people that are in charge in those districts, and it seems to help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mitchell?
With it, I'd like to echo what Ms. B said. I think there are a lot of senior citizens or a lot of disabled people who don't use Facebook or don't have a computer. Forget it for my senior dad, it's just he had me, and I'm wondering if we couldn't use, you know, newspaper circulation is below 8,000. I'm wondering if we couldn't use either City TV, which a lot of people watch, or reach out to the various radio stations and media outlets that do have a fiduciary obligation to do public service. I don't, I don't think in my district that it is, for example, you know, transportation for the other abled or anything else is nearly as well-known as it could be, because we think we're reasonably up to speed on social media and the web and everything else, but when you get to the elderly old, they're not. So I think I'd take to the broadcast waves.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, discussions? All right, hear none. We do not need a roll call vote on this, correct? Madam Clerk, Mr. County Attorney?
We're just agreeing to apply for.
That's correct. We're just applying for grants, and no roll call needed.
Okay. All those in favor of the approval to submit for the 2022-2023 NCDOT grant application, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly, appreciate it. Okay, next, we have planning, a request for addition to the state-maintained Secretary of Road system, Mr. Don Bumgarner. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Don?
We're here tonight to request that the board approve the terminal drive and airline drive located at the Coastal Carolina Regional Airport to be turned over to the state of North Carolina for maintenance. This is the standard resolution, SR2 resolution, that the state requires, and once this resolution has been passed, it will be forwarded to NCDOT for their consideration of adding the road to the state maintenance system. The state has been involved, and all the package has been put together, so it should move right along once this part of the process is completed. So we just need a resolution to pass the standard SR2 road addition resolution for terminal and airport drive.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? The motion is, as just stated, to request for the addition of the state-maintained Secretary of Road system. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passed.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. All right, next, we have a resolution to authorize the use of electronic advertisement for contracts and services. We have with us Mr. Gene Hodges and Mr. Craig Warren. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. I brought the muscle with me here, so we're good to go. This is the request I'm putting before you, a little background. So General Statute 143-129 establishes the procedures for letting public contracts by the state of North Carolina and political subdivisions, i.e. counties of the state. General Statute 143-129B spells out the requirement for advertising for bids by public bodies. This subsection allows counties to advertise for bids via a newspaper of general circulation within the county, or by electronic means, or both. If a county elects to advertise solely by electronic means, an approval by the Board of Commissioners is required. After conducting a review of Craven County's purchasing policies, the purchasing agent that works in the finance department has requested that an updated resolution, which was included in your agenda as attachment number eight, be approved by the Board of Commissioners authorizing the use of electronic means to advertise bid opportunities. For a little insight, at Craven County's website, www.cravencountync.gov, there is a special section under Services where all of Craven County's bid opportunities can be explored. Additionally, users can subscribe to receive email notifications of any bids that are posted to this website. Currently, as of last week, we have 258 users subscribe to receive these notifications. In addition to these tools, Craven County's purchasing agent posts all formal construction bid opportunities to the North Carolina Department Administration historically underutilized businesses, or hub, as is commonly referred to, website. So the request is to receive this information and ask to approve the resolution that's been presented.
I make a motion, so moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Commissioner Mitchell?
How much do we spend on a yearly basis putting advertisements for bid processes in print media?
A lot, because they're spread out across all the different departments, so they've all basically have an advertising line in different areas within the department.
Most of them are done online, on the website. Very rarely do most departments receive bids.
Maybe there are some that are always mandated, i.e. CARTs advertisements have to be in the newspaper, and I believe there's certain things related to planning and et cetera that's required to be in the newspaper. Those are some legally required advertisements, that you don't have this caveat. This would be a construction project. This would be looking for a contractor to do the fiber project. This would be those type of functions as opposed to legally required advertisements.
But right now, they are currently put out via the website as opposed to being advertised, say, in the Sun Journal?
Website, emails, email directly to vendors that has to be on mailing lists, those are the way that those that are being advertised now.
Okay, so we're not putting a whole lot of advertising?
There's not a lot, because much like what you said earlier, there's about 8,000 people that read the newspaper.
Right.
And, you know, the local circulation, there's not sometimes a lot of folks that can do this type of work.
All right, Mr. Vice Chair?
Yeah, I support this simply because anybody who's doing business today, wants to find out what's coming and what's available, is not going to rely on the newspaper.
Right.
So they're tuned in to the electronic method, and you've got several hundred people that are subscribers. I think the newspaper's antiquated when it comes to people who want to bid on projects.
And I'll say, just, you know, from my experience, once a project gets out there or it gets kind of, gets picked up on those electronics, it's almost like another place will post it, another place will post it, or they'll point to you, and you'll get calls sometimes out of the woodwork about, hey, what's this project? How do I get on the list? And you just, you work through them, you tell them to subscribe, and they'll get email every one that goes out.
Mr. Chairman?
Question.
I think the cost of, according to the attorney for this, is about $250 on the real estate?
Yes, sir, that's about right, right around $100. Every surplus property transaction the board approves has to be advertised by law in the paper. If there are upset bids, that's another advertisement, and of course, as you approved earlier today, economic development matters have to be advertised, and really, most public hearings have to be advertised. So it would be an interesting exercise to determine the total cost, but I know just in my office, it would be, you know, many thousands of dollars a year.
And this will save?
This, well, this, well, this does not apply to those items. These are only, this is only for bid opportunities.
Oh, too bad, we couldn't put that in.
This would, we don't have that, that is, I don't know that that's been approved yet.
Nope.
That's in the legislature.
And that's right, and the ads that we run are relatively short and simplistic. The newspapers usually charge by length, and if you get into some of these bid advertisements, I've seen those go a couple of thousand dollars each.
Well, that's what I was going to say, two or three times it goes out there.
Absolutely.
Basically, too much detail to include in a newspaper, and I will have to go to the website to get over it.
Commissioner Smith?
I agree with what Mr. Bush has said. However, I'm wondering, should it be, should one eliminate totally the other? I think that we should do it electronically, but I don't think that we should say that we're not going to advertise in the newspaper because there may be a time or a reason that you want to put it in both, or one or the other.
And I'll defer to the attorney, Commissioner Smith, that's a great point. I think by going, this methodology doesn't prohibit you from doing it in the newspaper. The board was to elect that per project, but if you don't approve this, you can't do it just electronically if you choose to. So this actually gives you more options, even though it seems like you're ending something, you're really not. You're just giving yourself options.
All right, any additional discussion, questions? All right, hear none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next item would be human resources, Ms. Amber Parker.
Good evening. At your meeting held on August 19th, you approved the Jailer Educational Incentive Policy that I presented to you that awards Jailer 1 employees who obtain their detention officer certification through the North Carolina Sheriff's Training and Standards Commission with a 2.4% increase. This policy was created in response to the difficulty we were facing with recruiting and retaining Jailer 1s. After implementation of that policy, Sheriff Hughes brought it to our attention that it would be in the best interest of Craven County to also include the Jailer 2 position employees in this policy as they achieve the same level of certification, and their retention is also critical to jail operations. This evening, I'm requesting an additional amendment to the Craven County, North Carolina Local Government Employees Personnel Resolution, Article 4, the Pay Plan, Section 16, Jailer Educational Incentive, to include making Jailer 2s eligible for the 2.4% certification increase. It's estimated that this policy amendment will make six Jailer 2s eligible for the incentive with an estimated additional cost of $4,4,702 for the remainder of this fiscal year.
All right, questions for Ms. Parker? Hear none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passed.
The next item I have for your consideration is an amendment to the application of the recruitment and retention bonus policy that you also adopted at your August 19th meeting. The recruitment and The recruitment and retention bonus policy was adopted to allow the county manager discretion to apply a recruitment and retention bonus in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars for full-time positions and five hundred dollars for part-time positions that are deemed to be hard to fill. The board is concerned that beginning to apply the recruitment and retention bonus to positions starting after August nineteenth may cause morale issues for recently hired employees in the same positions, and you asked for me to bring back some additional information on the cost to apply this policy to like positions deemed hard to fill retroactive to January first of two thousand and twenty-one. Applying the policy retroactively to January two thousand and twenty-one would result in five part-time and eight additional full-time employees being eligible to receive the recruitment and retention bonus for an estimated cost of thirteen thousand dollars. This application of policy would not require the personnel policy to be amended, but would require approval for the additional lap salary funds to be applied as described.
All right, questions? So what you want from the board tonight is authorization for the additional funding?
Correct. And just to apply it a little bit retroactively. So initially, when we presented the policy to the board, it was going forward as of the date you adopted the policy, that any positions deemed hard to fill, we would apply those bonuses. And there was some concern that it may be unfair or create a morale issue for the employees who were recently hired, so we wanted to look back at those who were hired within two thousand and twenty-one to try to make it more fair. So this is just authorizing an additional practice that we did not originally present on the nineteenth.
Okay, just so I might.
So let me, yeah, on the funding side, we believe the funding is there in lap salaries. The board just needs to kind of give, by your vote accepting this, it gives us the head nod that you agree to pay that out of that money for money that's already budgeted. So we don't need anything additional.
All right, you've heard the request, yeah, discuss, yeah, questions?
Now, we're just talking about jailers?
No, sir.
The sheriff's, what about the other departments? Now, we sent this across the whole board.
Yes, sir. There's only three positions that have been authorized, is jailers, carts drivers, and an IT position at this time. So that's the only three we deem hard to fill. And out of those, Ms. Parker said, there were five part-timers, some of those were carts, and then eight full-timers, which were all jailed.
We were looking at DSS as well as.
There's no currently recruited positions at this time. They've had trouble in the last six months, but at this time, all the positions are filled.
In DSS? All positions are filled in DSS?
They're not all filled, but what we were looking at were the social worker positions, and they were not currently advertising for the social worker positions. So we had not planned to apply the bonus to those positions at this time.
I didn't understand that either.
So basically, the Social Service Department had open positions. They've since filled all those prior to your August nineteenth meeting. Yes, since then, there's been positions that have opened up, so there are vacancies, but meeting the criteria that Ms. Parker discussed with you on the nineteenth, they have not met that yet to meet the standard of the length of service, the applicant pool. We haven't seen anything. That doesn't mean we can't cut it on in a month. It's just at the present time, since you approved the policy, the IT position, the carts drivers, and the jailers are the only three that are currently active.
So we could still apply it going forward?
You could.
If need be.
If something gets added on, we could always come back.
Or if we have a tremendous amount of vacancies, or we're finding that it's hard to fill the positions. So what we have seen so far is they have not been difficult to fill. Most of them are filled. There are some that are in transition where we're waiting to fill, but we don't have a lot of them that are vacant right now that are posted.
But I thought when we, no, go ahead, I had my turn, go ahead.
I want to speak to jailers. Now, are all jailer positions considered difficult to fill? So anytime you hire a jailer, they would be subject to this provision?
They would be until we determine that we're no longer having a difficulty in recruiting. So what we're hoping is that a combination of the certification bonus as well as the incentive will help to eliminate the number of positions we have turning over in the jail. Right now, we do have roughly seventeen or eighteen vacancies, and when you look at this list, the reason it's so small, the number of people that are going to be eligible for that retroactive certification bonus, it's because we hired so many people in two thousand and twenty or even two thousand and twenty-one, and they're just not staying. So we don't have the longevity there. So that's why it looks like a smaller number for those positions. But I think when we initially presented, we had about eighteen jail positions open, and I think we've had at least two or three more resignations since that time.
Mr. Chairman, so this is a stop-and-go resolution, is that the idea?
Right, so it's pending availability of funds, and so it's on an individual position basis. So if a department decides that they're having a hard time recruiting, they're not getting enough applicants that are qualified, or maybe there are just a lot of different postings for the same job in municipalities or counties that we are competing with, then we would say this is a position where we need a little extra lead on attracting those qualified applicants. So it would allow us to do that.
I think the confusion is, and I'm with Commissioner Liner on this, is that we thought that the other department, Social Service, was considered in that.
Well, the board.
Well, and it's not saying they won't be, there's just not a problem at the moment.
That's why I said stop and go.
Yep, so whenever there's an issue, and it was knock on wood that it doesn't happen tomorrow, but it could, and we'll know that those are ones that would go.
Actually, it sounds better.
Well, I think normally, when you start talking about jailers, I think in past discussions, we've been anywhere from five to eight, usually that we're short, is that somewhere factual?
I think it's been more like eighteen lately.
Now, we're eighteen, so, I mean, that's what.
Is it incentive?
Or is there?
So what this policy does is it actually has the county manager and myself taking a look at each position, so it's not on just a classification of positions. We'll look at each one to determine, is it really something that's difficult to fill, and would this bonus need to be applied? And that was the intent of the recruitment and the retention bonus for those positions.
To address Commissioner Liner's, I'm not, I hate to say concern, but question, if you found yourself in another department that you have this problem, I mean, we can, you've got it all outlined now in the language. It can be, we can consider it at one meeting, put it into action, and you can deal with it.
Yeah, absolutely. And there could be a vacancy tomorrow that we decided for DSS that would be put on. I mean, the IT one was one that came up, and we've talked with the director, he's not in the room, but there was a real hard time recruiting, the candidate pool wasn't good, so we needed something, as Amber said, something different to push it forward, so.
Commissioners, are you good with the explanation?
I'm good, I'm good.
I'm good also.
I'm good.
Okay, Commissioner Liner?
Yeah.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair. All right, hear no more questions and discussions. Do we know what we're voting on now?
You're just, really what you're voting on is to make the policy retroactive to January first, two thousand and twenty-one, and allow staff to use lap salaries to cover.
Make a motion to make the policy January first.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hear none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, Ms. Amber, we appreciate it. All right, Commissioners, next would be appointments. We have pending list, are there any nominations for any of the pending? Hear none, we will move to current. We have three that be forced this evening. The first is the Community Child Protection Team. Diane Donald from mental health seeks reappointment. I nominate Ms. Donald to be reappointed. Okay, we have a nomination for Ms. Donald, are there additional nominations? Hear none, she will be accepted by acclamation. Next would be the Trillium Health Services Board, Angela Sheets.
Make a nomination to reappoint.
All right, we have nomination from Ms. Sheets. Are there additional nominations from the board? Hear none, she will be accepted by acclamation. Next would be, we have a resignation on the Planning Board, Mr. Obie Kurtman. Mr. Kurtman does represent the district in which I represent, District Two, and I would ask the board, if you would, to let us defer that this evening. Hear no objection? All right, thank you. All right, then we will go to the upcoming appointments. You have there the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Fire Tax Commissioners, Craven County Board of Adjustments. Any other appointments to bring before the board this evening?
And, Mr. Chairman, I believe the Board of Adjustment member is from Township Five. I don't believe it's.
Fred Bullet.
I guess Fred Bullet.
Okay.
Fred Bullet.
Yeah. All right, thank you. All right, Mr. County Attorney. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I have four items for your consideration this evening. All four involve county-owned property acquired through the tax foreclosure process. The first two items are final approval from initial bids the board has previously approved. Item one is for property located at five ninety-seven out on Highway Fifty-five West in New Bern with a parcel ID number of eight-two-one-eight-oh-six-eight. We've got a final bid amount of three thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. There were no upset bids. We do own this property jointly with the City of New Bern, so we'll convey jointly with the city who's already approved this final bid. The taxes and the cost of foreclosure originally were four thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and ten cents, and the tax value of the property is six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. It is my recommendation the board to give this matter final approval.
All right, what's the desire of the board?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second for the conveyance of parcel number eight-two-eighteen-oh-six-eight. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
The second item is the identical situation to the first, except it's for property located at one-twenty-five Hillmont in New Bern with the parcel ID number of eight-two-one-nine-zero-zero-seven. We've got a final bid or offer amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars. The original taxes and the cost of foreclosure was six thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents, and the tax value of the property is fifteen thousand dollars. As with the other property, we own this jointly with the City of New Bern, who has previously given final approval, and I would recommend that the board give our final approval to this matter.
All right, moved. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the motion? Motion is for the conveyance of parcel number eight-two-eighteen-zero-zero-seven. Hear no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Commissioners, item three is an initial offer for property located out on Highway Fifty-five with a parcel ID number of three-oh-five-five-oh-four-oh. We've got an offer of two thousand nine hundred dollars. The original taxes and the cost of foreclosure were two thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. The tax value of the property is twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. As the board will recall, approval this evening will put the bid out for upset, will publish it, and if we have any upset bids, we'll be back before the board, but if not, we'll be back before the board for final approval. And I do suggest that the board authorize approval of this transaction.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none, this is for parcel number three-zero-five-five-zero-four-zero. Hear no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
And the last matter this evening is another initial offer on parcel number one-zero-two-eight-six-zero-zero-one. It is in Vanceboro, but there's no assigned street address. We've got an initial bid amount of three thousand eight hundred dollars. Taxes originally due with the cost of the foreclosure were three thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents, and we've got a tax value of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. We will put this out for upset bids if the board grants initial approval this evening, which I do recommend that the board consider doing.
Mr. Chairman, where is this in Vanceboro?
I don't know that it's actually within the city limits typically the.
Off of Old Brick Road.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll approve it. So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second? All right, any discussion? I do have a question. I did look at this one, it looks like it's in, to me, is out in the middle of a field on the side. Do we know that it has a right-of-way to it?
We do not know that.
My concern with, was, you know, I didn't know we even had that parcel out, but my concern in it being in the middle of a field like that, I mean, it was part of a farm.
You have to have a helicopter.
I mean, you know, and.
Maybe the railroad would go through there.
I mean, I don't know, you know, the people that own the land around it, to me, I don't know why they haven't tried to get it, but to me, it looks like it's going to cause some troubles for somebody if there's no right-of-way there.
Well, and, Mr. Chairman, these matters are always at the absolute discretion of the board. We can do some additional research, we can look back at the title work from the original tax foreclosure, and come back to the board with more information at the next meeting, if you would prefer, and you're not really going to slow anybody down because it would have to be out for upset bids and all that type of stuff, so we can certainly bring it back to the board with more information.
Well, I'm not trying to hold it up, but I just, you know, it's a little bit odd than normal, you know, than I see, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smith.
The people who own the farm, are they aware that it's up for?
I tried to do some calling around this weekend to find out exactly, and it is to my knowledge that that is air property, and you're probably familiar with air property.
I am, yes.
And that's the problem that, that concerns me even worse, you know, that, but my research was not extensive, but I did try to call some folks that lived around there to find out for sure.
Now, one other question.
Yes.
If it's air property and someone else can buy it, couldn't the farmers buy it as well?
Well, yes, I mean, anyone can upset the bid, I mean, it goes to the.
You're saying the farm's an air property around it, is that right?
That was my understanding.
Oh, the farm is air property?
Yes, the farm.
And that's what, there may not be a singular person that can make the decision to.
Oh, okay.
Now, that's what I was told, please don't hold me to it.
Yeah, I mean, that would make sense.
All right, any further discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second to proceed with the upbid process for parcel number one-zero-two-eight-six-zero-zero-one. Any further discussion?
Chairman. Is it your recommendation that we hold up for one meeting? That certainly isn't going to cause us any hardship and do a little more research?
What do you recommend?
If there are any reservations on the part of the board, I would say let's hold off and look at it again. We've, this was done back in two thousand and fourteen, there would have been a thorough title exam done at the time. I'm sure we can find those records and access them and make sure the board has all of the questions answered and everyone's perfectly comfortable with it.
All right, who made the motion, Madam?
I made the motion.
Do y'all mind pulling your motion, or?
I don't mind pulling it, I.
I would draw my second.
I mean, I don't see any sense to it, but I'll pull it.
Either way it goes, I mean, it's not enough out there, we could lose land.
Yeah.
Or, you know, for, to the farm, if they want to use it for crops or anything. I mean, I don't have a problem waiting for another meeting, that's no biggie, but.
Well, I'll go check it, I'll check it.
All right, we had, they said they would pull, do I hear any objection from that?
Objection.
No objection, the motion's been pulled, so if you will, just go back and look at.
We'll report back to the board at the next meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it.
This is my report.
Yes, sir.
We do have a closed session.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, next we have the petition of citizens under general topics. Mr. Vice Chair?
We have nobody signed up.
Nobody signed up. We, once again, give anyone in the audience the opportunity, if they desire to speak. All right, let me ask the board, will the board entertain? Hear no objection from anybody?
Objection.
All right, if you will, please state your name.
Jennifer Dacey, one-three-nine French Shores Drive, Trent Woods. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I just wanted to do two things tonight. First, I wanted to be sure you all are aware our teen court, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council teen court students are leading a nine-eleven remembrance ceremony in your courtyard on Saturday morning. It will begin promptly at nine-thirty-seven, the time that the Pentagon was hit on nine-eleven. So encourage you all to come, bring a chair, and if you'd like to speak, let me know that as well. Also, secondly, as Chair of the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, I want to draw your attention to the numbers of kids currently in quarantine in our school system. I think as Chair of the JCPC, this is an alarming number. We've currently got more than twelve percent of students in this county in quarantine. I don't know how many of those are high school students, but I think that we. I don't know how many of those are high school students, but I think that we, I am personally alarmed, both from a juvenile justice perspective and also from a mental health perspective. I don't think there can be any doubt that the last year of virtual learning was not good for the mental health of the majority of the kids in this county, and it was definitely not good for them from a, an educational perspective. Um, and we have to be concerned about juveniles who are sitting at home for fourteen days, otherwise healthy, and what are they doing with that time? That, that should be concerning, I think, to many people. They do not have an opportunity at this point to do virtual learning. That deadline has passed. So I'm just bringing this to your attention. Uh, it's something we will be looking at. Obviously, we will have year-on-year juvenile crime data that we will get from the state in the next month or so, and I will be sure to report that back to you. But I just wanted you all to be aware of that. I know in Milwaukee County, Wisconsin, they did a study recently, and, um, three out of five children who died by suicide last year told family members that virtual learning was a stressor in their lives, and those were kids between age twelve and seventeen. So I, I think that, um, as a community, we should be concerned about that. And I, I appreciate your attention. And I know it's not something you all can directly impact, but I wanted you to be aware. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, please. Ms. Daisy, you're saying there's no virtual learning?
There is a virtual learning option, but not once you're quarantined. I mean, you have to have already been enrolled in that. You had to choose that option in June. So if a child is sent out on quarantine, a healthy child, and, and I can give you all the statistics, but we have...
Well, that's fine, because I, I was told when we closed down Ramay Barton, that they were going to go to virtual learning for that school. Are you...
I, I...
I don't know the answer to that. I, I just know that, you know, as of Friday, they update these numbers on Friday. One-hundred-and-fifty-three total new positive cases, seventeen-hundred-and-seventy-nine total quarantine staff and students, and my understanding is that's about twelve percent of students who are quarantined in the entire system, twelve thousand, eight hundred students. So all I can tell you is that based on what I'm being told by parents, if a child is sent home in, a close contact, sent home, uh, they basically have to stay out of school for fourteen days, and they get their assignments off of something called Canvas, which I think is some sort of internet system. So they can get their assignments, but they're not actually doing anything other than, than that. It's a typical...
Watching YouTube.
They are probably hanging out with their friends.
Commissioner Liner, I may be incorrect, but I think I'm right in what I, when the county manager and I met with the superintendent and the Board of Education Chair. I think when the whole school closed down, the teachers did go to the virtual, because there was a promise made that they were not, teachers would not have to do in-person and virtual this school year.
Mm-hmm.
So, and again, I, I'm going back, so...
You're right.
Correct me if I'm wrong. So I think you are correct about if a school closes down, then they do offer. But my daughter just came out of quarantine, and she did not receive any instruction other than what she had in a paper packet. So I, I think that's accurate in what I'm telling you.
You saying there's seventeen-fifty-nine, that was your number?
Seventeen-seventy-nine, which includes, uh, staff. So I, I can't tell you how that breaks down. I'm sure the board could tell you, but they posted that data Friday afternoon. I can tell you that, you know, there are other counties, um, Carteret, for instance, I think they're looking at their numbers. They have a school board meeting tonight, um, but they looked at their numbers. Of course, they did in-person learning all year last year. They had about thirty-two-hundred or so close contacts of kids who tested positive, who were quarantined. Not a single one of those children ever tested positive. So...
Mr. Chairman, you know, this is unbelievable, but, uh, naturally, the Commissioners have nothing to do with it. It's the Board of Education, but in my opinion, it's the worst Board of Education we've ever had.
I, I, I'm not going to comment on that.
All right, any, any other questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Dacey.
Thank you.
We appreciate you being here. Thank you. All right, any other citizens? All right, here are none. We will go to county manager's report, Mr. White.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity tonight. There he is behind Gene. I just wanted to remark, I know many of you were at the C-1A annual meeting last Wednesday. I just want to thank Jeff and Abigail for putting on a great show. Really good news story, Jeff, uh, and I, I don't want to recite the numbers, but I would just say over thirteen-hundred jobs and over a hundred and thirty million investment in the last five years, uh, which is remarkable for Craven County. Uh, I wish I had the data for five years before that to see what it was, because I think this would have blown that out of the water. But Jeff, you and Abigail did a great job. It was a great night, and well, well done. I wanted to update the board. When we last talked about redistricting, we had a presentation from Caroline Mackey, who's the attorney portion of our team. We have the demographer Blake. And Caroline, uh, came right, it was just a few days after the data had been out. And she left this mysterious, uh, question of, well, we know there's three districts that are okay, and there's four that are not, but we didn't know which ones they were. So I just wanted to, and again, this data is preliminary. Um, as I looked, as I looked through the email just a moment ago, um, they said, you know, just use it, but be careful that people don't understand that's not the exact number. It could change slightly as we move forward. So the target for each Commissioner district, based on the new census data, is fourteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine people per district. Okay? So the three districts that are within a five percent margin of fourteen thousand, three eighty-nine, five percent low or five percent high, are District One, which is Commissioner Mark. He's at fourteen thousand, zero-nine-one, or a deviation of, uh, two-point-zero-seven percent under, which is within the range.
I'm fine.
The next one would be District Two, Commissioner, Chairman Jones, fifteen thousand, zero-three-zero, or a deviation of four-point-four-five percent, which is also within the range. And the last district that's within the range is District Four, which is Commissioner Mitchell, at fifteen thousand, zero-one-eight, four-point-three-seven percent, uh, within that standard deviation. So those were the three to kill the suspense here from a month ago, um, of the ones that were there. Now, that means there's four left, and I'll just start with District Three, Commissioner Smith. Uh, remember that target's fourteen thousand, three eighty-nine. Commissioner Smith's at thirteen thousand, three hundred and four, or a deviation of seven-point-five-four percent low. So what I'm seeing there, Commissioner Smith, is you're a couple hundred people, really, to get you back to that five percent or less. Okay, then we'll go to District Five, which is Commissioner McCabe. He's at twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifty, or eleven-point-three-nine percent low. District Six, Commissioner Liner, twelve thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight, ten-point-zero-eight percent low. And then the winner this cycle, Commissioner Booker, District Seven. He has seventeen thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine people, or twenty-two-point-two-four percent too high.
Well, I need some of his people.
That's right. That's exactly right. Nope. So, you know, the good news is, and, and I, I've studied these numbers trying to figure out, but if you add up the difference from five and six, you're at roughly twenty-two percent too low, and Commissioner Booker's twenty-two percent too high. So...
County manager?
Yes, sir.
Chair, you said, Ma, twelve thousand, seven fifty?
Yes, sir.
And eleven-point-three-nine percent low?
Yes, sir.
Damn, from fourteen thousand?
Fourteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine, yes, sir.
So you got to be at roughly thirteen, what, to be at the, at the...
So Commissioner Jones is at fifteen thousand, thirty, and he's four-point-four-five percent. So he's five percent over, so I think you need to be right at thirteen-nine, fourteen, fourteen thousand somewhere. Yeah.
So what do I need?
To get you back into five percent, we need to find you about a thousand people. Roughly. I mean, this is all, now, we're just, this is ballpark. Don't hold these numbers in your heart, because they could slightly change by the tens, not hundreds, but by the tens, they could change, as they get down deeper into that even street level data. So I wanted to kill the suspense and let you know, uh, and just, that was a good segue into, remember, on September twentieth, after your eight-thirty a.m. meeting, which is your next Commissioner meeting, Caroline Mackey and Blake will be here for the work session. And this will be the long one, where we kind of start looking at the differences and shuffling lines based on how we start achieving, getting the other four districts within the five percent. Okay? My guess is the, the line share of the work's going to be between five and seven, trying to figure out that twenty-two percent gap there that we've got to close. So I wa, I want to, if I can, have a conversation with each of those Commissioners that are, are in that category that has to go one way or the other before that, so we can start kind of game plan and what we want. And I love to talk to the Commissioners that are within range, if there's things you want to talk about. Again, I think on September twentieth, we're going to see a lot more data than what we've got now, and it's going to be really refined, and they're going to be ready to go with adjusting how we need to adjust. And again, the core principles was keeping the core of the districts whole, keeping the geography in place, really taking what we have now and trying to keep it as close to that as we can, so that the Commissioners represent the same area that you represent now. I think that was when I, we talked with her last time. Those were the things I took away, that each Commissioner was shaking their head about important things.
All right, questions?
Any, how long a time is that day going to be?
It's really going to be up to the process, I think.
We're looking at a longer date.
I plan on having lunch here.
Okay.
Now, let me ask you, if I can, ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
You know, you said they're going to be looking at lines and, and...
Yeah.
Getting suggestions from Commissioners.
Yep.
Are they going to have the ability to do it on the screen, or is it going to be the old way with paper?
I think it, it may be some of both. I think they'll have it on the screen, but it may be some things you can look at closer, because sometimes for me, it's hard to...
What I'm getting into is, you know, do we have adequate space here?
I see.
To do the paper, if, if that's what they're going to do?
We, we did the last time.
We did it in here. We sure did. We did actually go to our, our old work session format, Gene, which was the horseshoe in here.
Yeah, that's the way we do it.
We may need to do that again, so everybody can be on the same level working. Is that okay with the board? I like what we used to do.
If, if that's what the board wants, that, you know, the Vice Chair and I had talked about it, did we need to go to the convention center to have it spread out? I mean, I'm not advocating for it, but, you know, we want to make sure we have adequate room.
Okay, right. We might have some public that wants to come and view as well.
But if we were going to do that, you need to go ahead and...
Uh, we would just recess the meeting at eight-thirty meeting to reconvene at the convention center. You wouldn't need to, there's no notice or anything you need to do.
If, if we do that, my, my problem with the convention center is sometimes the screen is way over there, and I'm old and blind, so...
Oh, we would have to do it upstairs.
Okay, do it upstairs, okay. Never mind.
I would think.
And you may have adequate room here. Right, right.
I'll tell you what, soon as we get done with tonight, we'll go ahead and tomorrow and kind of see how we can set it up and talk to our, our team coming in, see what they're, they think the best thing is there. I'll, I'll feel you.
Did it pretty good the last time here.
Yeah.
Commissioner Smith.
Just off the top of your head, are the larger districts connecting in some way with the smaller ones?
It certainly is for five, six, and seven. Okay? I mean, those, again, you got twenty-two percent low on the eastern end. Commissioner Booker's twenty-two percent high, so we're just going to have to kind of stair-step it up. Um, on the, I call the New Bern West Side, it's no, really, because the three that are okay border your district, which is just slightly too low. Really, I mean, being seven-point-five percent, we really don't get two-point-five to get you back in, in there. And I think that may be just some subtle changes, uh, within the city, almost it seems like, where you could find population centers to, to go there. And there may be some things that the Commissioners see that may be, um, areas that you, you definitely want to keep, or areas that may be okay. I mean, those are things that to think about as you come into that next meeting, you know, what's the core of your district? What do you absolutely want to maintain there?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I can. Jack, how is this going to affect Theron and I with Havelock challenging the numbers?
Well, that was next on my list to talk about, but, and I don't know the answer to that. Uh, I did, uh, let our consultants know that Havelock planned on challenging the number. I got an email from the city manager last week, ta, talking to me about their process. I think you were on that as well. Uh, I don't know what it means, and I don't know how long it takes to do that. Uh, I've never been a part of something like that, Mr. Grady, I don't know if you have, um, but it's not going to be quick, in my opinion, because they're going to have to do sort of their own canvas, which may cost some money and some time.
Well, it's going to cost some money.
And you may have, have you, you been through one of those before?
With dealing with the city, they did.
Yeah, yeah.
Because what I'm trying to say...
That won't be a part of this.
Theron's numbers could actually be okay, because all of his numbers came from the base.
Correct.
And that's what they're, that's what they're challenging, which is, I think they have a good, good challenge on and everything. So I just want to make sure.
Our, our problem, so to answer your question more directly, our issues, there's a state law that says we're going to have it done by November seventeenth, regardless of a challenge or anything that goes on with the census. So I'm not of the opinion, Ari, that, that redistricting is something you can come back to if Havelock was to be successful. Now, the reason Havelock's doing it is not necessarily for districting, they're doing it for funding, right? Because those numbers from a federal funding standpoint mean a lot. So we may be kind of, we may be caught in between, and there may not be a resolution in time for us.
Yeah, we're, we're going to have to base our decision on the information that's out there right now, uh, just based on the statute and the deadlines that the General Assembly, um, has, has set for us, what a successful challenge would mean. Uh, there's, there's not really any provision in the, in the statute for that, so we'd, uh, have to look at that if, if, if we get to that position.
And just, Commissioner Liner, to your point, we've advocated for a longer time, do the census, to get the redistricting done. We started doing that back in the spring, and November seventeenth was what stuck for the legislature, and, you know, we're dealt that hand, and unfortunately, I mean, if we'd had more time, we certainly could take those things into consideration.
Mr. Chair, um, I missed, I remember, uh, Joe Liner mentioned something about the base. Is that, um, twelve thousand include the base?
Your district includes the base.
Yes.
Okay, that twelve thousand, okay.
So your number is inclusive of what your district is now.
Okay.
All right, additional questions?
Well, if they, if we do this and Havelock challenges it, then are we sort of on hold, or do we go ahead and it gets redone later?
You got to go ahead by the state law.
By state law.
November seventeenth, we got to be done, because we got filing in December, so we got to file based on how those districts are drawn.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ari, but you wouldn't be changed until the next census, correct?
Uh, absent a successful challenge, that's correct. It's an every-ten-year, year process, and I'm not, uh, as I sit here today, I can't tell you what a successful challenge would require us to do if we would need to go back and, and, and tweak the districts for, um, the next election after the, the challenge. I, I just honestly don't know, but...
That may be a good question, Ari. You and I could email to Caroline tomorrow. That may be a good question, Ari. You and I could email to Caroline tomorrow.
It's a great question for Caroline, so, you know, we'll have an answer for you.
All right, any other questions about redistricting? All right.
And, Mr. Chairman, I just had two quick other things. The brick and mortar project for the Craven County Courthouse is ongoing. The gentleman, Gene and I have met with him a couple times. He's making great progress. He started on the side that actually faces the front of our administration building on Craven Street. Last I checked, Gene, he was about halfway down, I believe, that side of the courthouse. He has definitely started in the, one of the worst areas we saw from where the water was coming through. I've seen his work. It looks really good. We're continuing our challenge on the, the material that would go on after he's done. We're working with the city. I believe, Gene, we're scheduled for the, yeah, the store preservation in October, I believe. Sounds right. So we're continuing to work. The city certainly sees it our way. But this board, you know, as Commissioner Booker said early on, they, they have a sort of independent streak, and they're going to talk to the state and other folks to get their advice. Last, Commissioner Liner and I attended a call for the Dick Center. Our numbers were up for July. I believe it was around 13 to 15, George, which was an improvement over June. We are starting to see more folks being diverted from the emergency room, which was one of the intentions of this program for folks who are in crisis. And we're also seeing successful handoffs, which means someone was in the crisis center and then goes to long-term care after that. There is a part of the contract with the company that runs the Dick Center that they do have to have that step in place. Sometimes it's easy, sometimes it's hard. Just depends on how far they have to go out and how full these facilities are when they're making those calls, but.
Mr. Chairman, do we have a chair yet?
What's that?
Do we have a chair?
No, sir. They're still working on that, and they're actually, Commissioner Liner and I were talking, there's some legislation, there's some potential state funding they're working on, but no, nothing to confirm yet.
Any questions for the county manager?
I think, sir, we're ready to go to our commissioner comments.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, Commissioners' report. We'll start with Commissioner Mitchell.
Nothing to report.
All right. Commissioner McCabe?
Nothing to report, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Liner?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Smith?
Nothing.
Okay. Commissioner Mark?
Yes. We're having a 9/11 ceremony at Fairfield on, starts at 8:00 in the morning. Like to see some people there. I went to a budget meeting at the hospital. The hospital is not in the greatest shape that it was two years ago before COVID, but we have about an operating budget of $684,000 for next year, to going into next year. The COVID, the last COVID I saw was 46 this morning. We had in, that were COVID. Four were in ICU, and I think two, or no, one was in the cage. Went to TDA meeting, and the convention center and the TDA department in New Bern is doing better than we have, so things are looking good there. I had a Highway 7 meeting that was postponed from September to October, and that's my report, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Chair?
I have nothing.
All right, and I have nothing. Commissioners, we do have a closed session this evening pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318A3, Attorney Client Privilege and General Statute 143-318A4, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries and other businesses in the area served by the public body. I'd like to entertain a motion, and then after we entertain that motion, I just want to take about a five, 10-minute break if we can to get set up for it. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here are none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll take about a five-minute recess.